We are recording.
Okay, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order of May 7, 2020. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino? Alderman Sorrentino?
Sunny, you're muted.
Here Lynn, I'm here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
You might still be in the way.
Alderman Sismarski?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Messina? Mayor Police?
Here.
Okay, can I see Alderman Woods?
Here.
Okay. And Alderman Messina, absent at the moment.
Okay, so we're missing two right now in the front. Next up, Dan, Pledge of Allegiance. Guys, ready?
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America.
To the Republic which stands one nation, under God.
Indivisible, with no end. Oh my goodness.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the minutes of April 16, 2020.
Second.
Mike and Sunny, second. Any questions? Any corrections? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Hey, Randy Messina's in.
Randy's not in. Okay. Okay, so no opposed, minutes are approved. Okay. Do we have anybody, any resident that wishes to be heard? Nobody? Nick, anybody? Nick? Did I move Nick? Yes, you know?
There's nobody else in the meeting.
Don't jump off the bridge, Randy.
Yeah, I see nothing. Based on the connection, I might answer.
Mayor's report. We've got the 2020 Prairie Fest. As you guys may have heard, the governor has restored plans, which basically would mean the fifth section before anything is Phase Five. Illinois, that's when you can have over 50 people. We're not even at Phase Three yet. Honestly. Unless anybody's objecting, I think we should just cancel.
I agree.
Make a motion to postpone.
Second. Postpone, cancel, not. We've, yeah, exactly. We're making a motion to postpone.
I made a motion to postpone.
To postpone when? Second.
Hold on a second. Mike, what are you postponing it to? It's indefinite.
I, we won't be able to, I'm pretty sure we won't be able to get another chance to do it. I mean, you don't, we don't know. It's indefinite. He has a right to go forward and backwards on that, on that scale. What are you gonna do? Put it in, put it in September or October? And then, you know, try to schedule it and try to get people to come out. Maybe we should just put a fund together or or put a fund together and start building a fund for next year's.
Michael, that would be cancel, not postpone.
Okay, okay, canceled for this year, for the year 2020.
Right.
That's, that's what I figured yours.
Hey, Mayor?
Go ahead, Eugene.
Hey, so let me ask this question. Is there a way that if we, we cancel it, which I'm, I'm agreed of, can we lock those bands in for next year now?
Uh, Mayor?
If I could, Mayor.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I had talked to the management company about that very possibility. And they had indicated that that could be a strategy if we wanted to go down that route. So that is a strategy to choose from, but there are a couple other options as well. But we could make it simple and do that if we wanted to, or we could do a couple other different things. Tonight, the purpose though was to decide whether or not we wanted to cancel. And then we can work on some of the residual things perhaps in the special events committee.
If I'm one of them.
Good, Mr. Bennett. Well done.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, I, thank you. What, I would just, I think if you go ahead and then cancel it, if things change and the governor claws back on the terms or we have another opportunity with the understanding that the committee can try to secure the same bands. I mean, there was already a movement for them to begin with. I, my recommendation would be to cancel it with direction of staff to see if they can lock in those bands for either a delayed date sometime in the, late in the summer, early fall, or for the following year, and then come back with a contract proposal for the council to consider. But right now, I think the action should be to cancel it so we don't end up with, with the incurring costs if we do it too close to the event.
Right, the other prob, the other problem is if once you postpone, even if you postpone till later, you know, you might not have the carnival. And without the carnival, then, you know, we had that before years ago, but again. Can I be recognized? Go ahead. Yeah, so I mean, the DuPage County count canceled theirs and theirs the week before us, right?
Yes. I tasked you, it was two weeks.
Yeah. And I believe Al Grove just canceled theirs, I think came out today. So I'm in also an agreement canceling it for this year. Okay, so we have a motion to cancel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor, if I could.
I got a question, Pat. So first, Mike said postpone and our second. Hold on a second, hold on a second. Just wanna make sure we're clear. Okay, so you're amending your motion. Art?
Yeah.
Are you still second?
No. Okay. And before we move forward, one question. So I, I get what we're doing, but at some point, we gotta stop rolling down the hill too. Isn't there any way that we can wait two weeks before we make this decision? I'm sure nobody else is booking these bands. I'm sure if we reached out and I, I get what everybody's saying, but again, at, at some point, we have to start doing something. The world has to come back. So.
My understanding is there's money already involved that vendors are looking for must.
Okay.
Sunny here, I'll second Michael's motion.
Mayor, if I could.
Hold on a second. Hold on. Who wants to be recognized? Who wanted to be recognized instead?
Uh, Bond?
Yes, Mr. Bond.
Just so it's clear, because we have two motions and two seconds on the, on the floor, so it's clear.
No, I amended my motion.
And the secondor would have to accept the amendment as a friendly amendment, so that that's the only motion left for.
He did, he did not, but.
Alright, that's what I'm saying. So we got two motions on the So right now, there's two motions on the floor. One is the original motion and there's a motion to amend, that motion to cancel it. So my suggestion would be either start all over with a, a fresh motion, have everybody withdraw their, have the movement withdraw their motion and then make a new motion and get a second and then a discussion in both.
Alright, Mike, are you gonna withdraw your motion?
Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion and redo, re, redone, renew the motion.
And the secondor also has to withdraw, Pat? Pat?
I'd. Yeah, once the motion.
Okay, so I agree, so that's withdrawn. Now we need a motion.
I'd like to make the motion.
Alright, do I have a second?
To cancel.
I'll second. Sunny can't seconds.
Okay. Any other questions? Just so everybody knows, talking to Grant, if for some reason things were to change, we might be able to do something in August with the sound of summer. But again, we need to get past Phase Three and Four before we can even think about it. Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
What's the motion on the floor?
It's to cancel.
Thank you.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Okay, may it pass.
Uh, Mayor, can I say something really quick?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
City Manager. Yeah, I just wanted to, most of the other communities in canceling their large, fast, July Fourth fireworks or whatever big event they have, the residual smaller event up until August 1st have all pretty much been canceled. So our thought was, like you had just said, we would cancel the smaller events up until August 1st and then perhaps try to throw together some of the sounds or Sound of Summer, other events post August 1st. But everything before August 1st would essentially be postponed or canceled.
Okay. Next, Mr. Mermis, do you report? Do you have anything?
Yes, I have two items. As with all the projects the city takes on, one major goal for the upcoming Ward Two and Three Stormwater Project is to provide a complete understanding, information, and clear communication to our residents. Therefore, we have developed a project website with information, maps, a full overview presentation video that details the scope of the project and a feedback form that will allow the residents to ask questions and give their thoughts. Once construction begins, the city will also be rolling out a dedicated Twitter feed embedded in that page that will allow residents to subscribe and receive live updates on the project. The site is live right now at www dot, or www dot wooddale dot com backslash construction. A mailer has also gone out, gone out to every resident in the city. You should have seen that already. And it explains the basics and invites them to visit the page. And the information was also included in the May-June newsletter. And then additional updates will go out in future newsletter as the construction project proceeds. My second item, I'll defer to Chief Festa for a quick blurb.
Go ahead.
Alright, thanks, Mr. Manager and Mayor. Well, just as a reminder, as we've, as we approach, well, really any season, we'd like to remind residents that they should be locking their vehicles at night. Last night, we had a couple more vehicles that were unlocked that were entered. We have been doing quite a bit of social media blitz on this through our Facebook and also in the newsletter. And also countywide, we did a reminder that there's crews that are coming into the DuPage municipalities and looking for unlocked vehicles, vehicles that have cops in the car and then stealing those vehicles to commit crimes in other towns. So just a reminder, all residents, please keep your doors locked every night and we will continue to push out reminders via social media and in the city newsletter.
Okay.
That concludes my report. Yes, yes, that's it.
Well, one quick question for you and the chief, basically for that project. Potter Street seems to have many cars parked on it even during the day. Where is the, do we have the alternative parking? Are you gonna be ready for these people when we're ready to go? Because I, I have a feeling that a lot of people might have thrown out the mailers and whatnot. And, so I don't know, there's something you can put on these cars to let them know?
I, I would just say that, I mean, it's going to be quite an adventure out there for the foreseeable future. And that's part of the reason why we did send a citywide mailer for this project, which we usually do not do. But because of the magnitude, we did that. We have a video out there and we have a lot of things that really have gone above and beyond what we normally would do for a project. I would defer over to Alan, or Mr. Wang, called Work Director and Chief, to maybe talk about any details as far as temporary parking or anything like that. But it will be an adventure and you will likely get calls. It is a very large scale project that will impact people's daily lives.
Can I be recognized, Mayor?
Go ahead, Sunny.
What we can do is you can contact Georgetown Association, Julie Miller. She has everybody's email that she, maybe she can email the residents and let them know what the situation is. Just do something else that we can, that they can do that we can do too. Yeah, both, both subdivisions, because you've got the other homeowner association.
This is Director Wang, Mayor, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Mr. Wang.
Yeah, I've been in contact with all of the associations around this area over the past weeks, updating them on their construction schedule and I will continue to do so during the duration of this project.
Okay. Alright, anything further on this? Because I'm gonna, I will go to the consent agenda next. I need, it's no objection, we need to entertain a motion to approve three items. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
So good.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, we need a motion to approve the items. On the agenda, item number one, a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and Wooddale Fire Protection District, number one, for fire equipment to serve the city's development area. Item number two, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for management of the industrial treatment program for fiscal year 2021 in amount not to exceed 123,000. Item number three, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the 2020 risk and resiliency assessment in amount not to exceed 37,300. Do I have a motion? A move. So move, second. Okay. We have Eugene, Eugene and Art. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman report, planning and zoning, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, Alderman Sorrentino?
Uh, one report, Mayor. Resolution approving professional cleaning of city-owned facilities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Chief, you wanna take that? That's my motion. Alright, take a roll.
Chief, did you want to say anything? Or I know Sunny called you.
Not necessary.
Okay, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, um, we did it this one time already, so are we going, end up doing it again down the line? Because I believe that stuff only lasts for, I heard three weeks, so wow. What are we doing here?
Uh, Mayor, can I be recognized, City Manager?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
There, there is definitely a possibility we could do that again. You will, I can't remember if I actually sent the email out on this or not, but I know it's in the manager's report forthcoming tomorrow. But we did do a second vehicular clean. We were able to partner with the fire district once again and get our city vehicles cleaned. So that was really good news. And there's also the very strong possibility that the expenses for the cleaning are going to be reimbursed. So there is probably a likelihood we will end up doing it at least one more time.
Alright, thank you.
And just on the, on the reimbursement stuff, so the county received about $162 million. Uh, there's some discussion on how they're going to distribute some of that money. It might be per capita. So, again, the county's gonna take what they've spent and then per capita with all the, all the communities in each state. So if we can get an, an update, if we have a number already, just out of curiosity, how much we've spent on this, just to see where we stand. So when I'm on one of these calls, because that was part of the discussion today on how that money's gonna be distributed by the county. And it sounds like it might be per capita.
Can I be recognized?
I'm gonna call the question now.
We know them.
Yeah, we, we have the, we have the tracking sheet. If you all are interested, we could shoot it over to you. And you can see the, the expenditure.
Okay. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Chief.
Jeff, when I, reading the minutes, maybe I misread something, but it seemed like in the public works building, they were only doing like doorknobs and handles in the bay area. What about the offices there?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, actually, the way it was worded was kinda weird, but in reality, what they were talking about was we have kind of like a great big storage area at the 720 building. And they did not go up and clean the, the storage area where we housed a lot of boxes and files and things like that. But all the offices were cleaned, all of the restroom facilities cleaned, all the commonplace areas cleaned, lunchrooms, things like that. In the storage area, they just went in there and cleaned things that people would touch, like switches, things like that. But they did not go and disinfecting boxes or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. It was a little confusing when I read it.
I, I agree with that.
Anyone else like to be recognized? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. And that concludes your report?
End of my report. That's it, the end of my report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I have six items and they all related to the Georgetown Association at 301 Prospect Avenue for the Ward Two and Three Stormwater Projects. The first one is a resolution authorizing a temporary construction easement located at the property commonly known as 301 South Prospect Avenue, pin number 0316103027000. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay. Next. Hold, hold on one second. Pat, I got a question for you. Can we, can we make one motion for all six, or should we do separate roll calls for everyone?
Yeah, unfortunately, you have to do separate because they're all separate property address, even though the owner is the same. It's a condo association. It's a, an easement for each of those individual properties.
Okay, so we need a roll call for each.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that one passes.
Next is a, a resolution authorizing a temporary construction easement located at property commonly known as 301 South Prospect Avenue, pin number 0316111031000. That is my motion.
Second. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next is a resolution authorizing a temporary construction easement located at the property commonly known as 301 South Prospect Avenue, pin number 0316112032000. That is my motion.
Second. Second.
Okay, motion second. Roll call, please.
Who seconded that motion, please?
I did. Alderman Jacob. Kobe.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And the fourth item is a, is a resolution authorizing a temporary construction easement located at the property commonly known as 301 South Prospect Avenue, pin number 0316113034000. That is my motion.
Second.
Second.
Here we have motion and second. Eugene was first on the second. Roll, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes.
And the fifth item is a resolution authorizing a temporary construction easement located at the property commonly known as 301 South Prospect Avenue, pin number 0316114022000. That is my motion.
A move.
Here we have motion and second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes.
And the last item is a resolution authorizing a temporary construction easement located at the property commonly known as 301 South Prospect Avenue and the pin number is 0316115021000. That is my motion.
A move. Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. Roll call, please.
Was that seconded by Alderman Messina?
No, Eugene was first.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. And that's the end of my report, Mayor. Thank you. Under Finance and Administration, Alderman Woods?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Other Business, we have Airport Noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Under Stormwater Commission, Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. And next is the approval of list of bills, Alderman Woods? And next is the approval of list of bills. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve the list of bills for May 7th, 2020, in the amount of $395,949.49.
That's your motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
Second. The Senate, the Senate gets the first.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, who was second? Anybody second?
Second.
Second.
I think Tony was first on that second, okay? Questions on the bills, anyone?
What was that? There you are, Mayor.
We had a motion by Dean. Tony second. Any questions under any of the bills? Anyone? No questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes.
Mayor, can I be?
Well done. And it takes care of the list of bills. Alderman Sismarzki, you got a question?
Yeah, it's, I don't know if you, you know, under other business, it's actually for whoever's in charge, airplane noise. I meant to ask it, but it was so quick. I got two emails from two separate residents asking a question about with the lack of flights, why they keep using the northerly runways over their houses. I don't know if there's a question and a answer, so I'll get back to them. No big deal. If you can't, I'll, I mean, obviously, probably control tower issue, but.
Forward the emails to myself, Jeff.
Okay.
We'll get Wilson.
Thank you.
Send them over to CDC. And what time of day, Michael? Make sure what time of day the issue is. If you don't have it on there.
They're saying it's, they're saying it. They both.
Okay. As far as executive session, staff is working on, if we need one coming up, because we could be like this for at least another four to six weeks before we can have over ten people. Again, things can change. We're hoping things change quicker. But the staff will be ready if we need that. We have no items to be referred. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Everyone stay safe and healthy, and have a good night.
Stay well, boys.
Take care.